Maloney. Ned here, Ashner.
Yes.
Shelkoff. Addison. Donovan.
Here.
Langschmidt.
Here.
John Meyer.
Yes. Need a motion for declaration of the legal meeting. Randy and Mark. Move this regular meeting of July 16th be third of legal meetings.
Langschmidt. Lightline.
Yes.
Maloney. Ned, yes. Ashner.
Yes.
Donovan.
Yes.
John Meyer.
Yes. Need a motion to excuse Jan.
So moved.
Moved by Mark, second by Sean. Have the board excuse the absence of a member of Jan, Shelkoff, from July 16th regular board meeting. Discussion.
Ned, yes. Ashner.
Yes.
Donovan.
Yes.
Langschmidt.
Yes.
Lightline.
Yes.
Maloney.
Yes.
John Meyer.
Yes. This is a portion of the meeting set aside for public comment. Do you have any public comments to see? Go into a report from Mr. Norvell.
I think I enclosed in your packet an article that was in NCSA Today concerning school construction. I just thought it was interesting and I stuck it in your packet for you to take a look at. There was also a memo from our attorneys concerning a recent Supreme Court ruling. I think it's called the Candy Kane case. It basically has to do with handing out gifts in schools and just some stuff we need to be aware of. There was a brochure in there on ESU 6 Career Academies. We participated in the Career Academies for the last three years, but I thought you might take a look at it and make yourself aware of that. And we do have some kids, not many kids, but a few kids that sign up for the Career Academy every year.
Do all the students get that brochure or just like they ask for it?
They should get it during registration in spring. So Denise Betts and Mr. Norvell should get it to them. Give them that information. Little update on school lunch changes. Our head cook Cindy Kennel and then Bev Moleman from the middle school, they attended a workshop this summer. We've been aware of the changes that are coming. We weren't sure what kind of changes, but they're really going, if you want to get federal subsidies, which we get about 80,000 in federal subsidies from the federal government for our lunch program through commodities and payments back every month. You have to follow this new healthy choice plan in the lunch menu. Just to give you a couple of changes. Number one, like when we have pizza, it has to be served on wheat crust now. Can't be any white flour. Has to be wheat. We have to take some of the things off of our salad bar that we've been offering that are high calorie, like ranch dressing. Sometimes Cindy cuts up ham or cuts up bacon bits and I don't, I know we can't have both of them out there at the same time, so whether we can have one or the other, you know, that's, we'll figure that out. But we've always had like bread and butter out on the salad bar for kids that didn't like the entree. Well, we can't do that. The bread and butter has to be wheat bread and peanut butter. That has to be behind the counter and if a kid doesn't like the entree, they can request the peanut butter sandwich. So, you know, we're gonna send, we always send a free and reduced lunch letter to all parents the first week in August. We're also gonna include a letter of all the changes in the lunch program and it could cause more kids to bring their lunch. We have to watch calories. I was telling Sean earlier, I think, you know Cindy up here at the high school, our boys, she always gave them like eight chicken nuggets. Well, you're limited to five, things like that because eight has too many calories in eight of them. There's a lot less breading now on the chicken nuggets, which I bring up chicken nuggets because it's one of the kids' favorite meals here at the school. There will be some changes and we're gonna try to be proactive and get those changes out to the community, you know, prior to the start of school. We'll also have the same article on our website about the lunch changes and also have it in the newsletter, but we're also gonna send every parent an actual letter telling them the changes, so.
So then you can't go back for seconds either, then?
You can go back for seconds, you gotta pay, we've, a lot of times if we had food left over, just let kids go back.
But I mean because of the new rules.
New rules, you can go back for seconds, but it's 50 cents. So yeah, you could have that extra three chicken nuggets, but you can't just give it to them for what's in the freezer.
They gotta have one.
If they want extra calories, they're paying for them.
As far as we all do, we all get the subsidies.
No, if we don't take part in it, we don't get the subsidies, yeah.
So we're gonna add something, yes?
Well, if you, you know, if we wanna supplement our lunch fund 80,000 and forget about the feds, we already subsidize it 30,000 a year. We can't make ends meet the way it is, so we need the 80,000. It may go over better than I think, but I just, I got two girls pretty picky about what they eat and I'll guarantee you they'd have brought their lunch every day, so.
Is the government trying to kill the kids who are allergic to peanuts or what? Peanut butter?
Well, you gotta have an alternative for those that are allergic to. So we have a little girl at the middle school that this year is diabetic and so we have to watch her carbs and give her a shot every day at lunch and do some things like that too. So I mean, we have to monitor those things anyway, so. I just, you know, you may be the first wall and catching a few phone calls when things go wrong, but we really don't have a whole lot of choice. When we send out that letter on the guidelines, I'll make sure you guys get a copy of that and it really, Cindy's gotten down pretty much to what will work and what can't work. We have to turn the menus in every day now, so. They just came out and monitored us maybe two or three times a year and they would come out. They'd tell you when you're coming, you send them their menu, they take the temperature of food and make sure it's the right degrees and things like that. We have to submit our menus there, so. We're gonna probably try to use about the same 15 to 20 menus, just recycle them. Just do it over and over again.
So we're telling the same thing already? The feds or anything else taking them off 70, 70 calories if these are right? They're right. Don't you think well?
Yeah. So anyway, the pledge of allegiance, the Department of Ed was supposed to adopt their change in July and they postponed it to August, so we're kinda on hold on that, but basically what they're saying is the proposed rule will require each public school district to establish a period of time during the school day when a majority of the students will be led in the recitation of the pledge of allegiance in the presence of the U.S. flag and grades K through 12. Student participation is voluntary. Students not participating in the recitation of the pledge would be permitted to silently stand or remain seated so long as they respect the rights of those electing to participate. Hasn't been adopted yet, but I'm pretty sure it will be adopted. I know that we already did the pledge K4. I'm not positive what we do in 5 through 8, whether to do it every day or just at times, but I'm positive we don't do it in 9 through 12, so it will be a little bit of a change, but it's something that only takes about a minute, so it's not, it's not a big deal. We'll certainly comply with whatever they tell us we need to do. Think there was a letter in your packet, we had a no child left behind review in maybe early June and I put the results of that in your packet. There should have been a couple of thank yous for two of the girls that got the Mabel Neds Scholarship in there. There were some more thank yous that I had out here today from the FBLA students and their instructors in DeTally. That was in your pile when you got here somewhere. And I think there was a letter today about our accreditation and we're a fully accredited school for the 2012 and 2015 student year and that was something I just got today and I brought it. Any questions from anyone? The conference?
Is that it? We need a motion for the minutes of the June 11th regular board meeting. Move, second. Moved by Jim, second by Dave, that the board approved the minutes of the June 11th regular board meeting. Discussion. Roll call.
Donovan.
Yes.
Ashner.
Yes.
Langschmidt.
Yes.
Lightline.
Yes.
Maloney.
Yes.
Ned, yes. John Meyer.
Yes.
Need a motion for the financial reports.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Mark and second by Jim, that the board approved the financial reports as presented. Discussion. Roll call.
Lightline.
Yes.
Donovan.
Yes.
Shelkoff. Addison. Langschmidt.
Yes.
Maloney.
Yes.
Ned, yes. Ashner.
Yes.
John Meyer.
Yes.
Need a motion for the general fund claims. Move, I'll second. Is that right? Randy.
Yes.
Moved by Randy and second by Jim, the board approved the general fund claims in the amount of $301,171.64. Discussion.
Largest claim on there was our quarterly spent payment to ESU 6 and we'll have one in August. It'll be just for the summer, it'll be a little bit smaller, but the $211,000 payment was the majority of this month's claim.
Langschmidt.
Yes.
Donovan.
Yes.
Lightline.
Yes.
Maloney.
Yes.
Ned, yes. Ashner.
Yes.
John Meyer.
Yes.
Building fund claims. Need a motion. Second. Moved by Mark and second by Dave, that the board approved the building fund claims in the amount of $4,233.38. Discussion.
Elementary playground border, if it's that white PVC pipe that goes around elementary building, that's the building fund claim. It was approved by the building fund, per the building community last October.
Roll call.
Lightline.
Yes.
Ashner.
Yes.
Langschmidt.
Yes.
Maloney.
Yes.
Ned, yes. Donovan.
Yes.
John Meyer.
Yes.
Need a motion for the miscellaneous charges scheduled. Randy.
Yes.
Moved by Jim and second by Randy, that the board approved the 2012, 2013 miscellaneous charges scheduled as presented. Discussion. Roll call.
Donovan.
Yes.
Langschmidt.
Yes.
Lightline.
Yes.
Maloney.
Yes.
Ned, yes. Ashner.
Yes.
John Meyer.
Yes.
Discussion. This next one before we can take a motion, second, so if you'd be allowed, we have a resolution.
Yeah, yeah. Insurance bids, there were two and kind of on this sheet, I tried to summarize everything the best I could on this, on this sheet here that I have. And in the black on this sheet is our current, what we pay currently for insurance through Indiana. Stu Seward is the agent and All-American. If you remember, we've had him, I think maybe four years and the Indiana insurance is no longer gonna carry Nebraska and Iowa schools. And those were basically the costs of each of the different types of insurance that we get through Indiana. We received today before noon, two different proposals. One from Continental Western with Stu Seward and All-American Insurance as an agent and I have the cost listed there with each corresponding insurance types. And then an EMC proposal from Inspro and Cody Lightline as agent and Cody's here tonight if you have any questions. Basically, on the EMC proposal, if you look at it, there are two, we can choose from two different types of workers' comp there. EMC workers' comp is the $26,000 figure, but they would, they could go through a separate company, a separate entity for the workers' comp at $22,018 if that's what we so desired. Part of the, part of what I, what I've seen as a problem with that is I'd hate to be working with a different company for workers' comp. An EMC would pay us back a dividend if we had a good year where we didn't have a lot of claims, they'd pay a dividend back. Am I saying that right, Cody?
Yes.
And so although, although having a separate workers' comp, I think is a little cheaper, I guess my feeling is it wouldn't necessarily be the right way to go. I think there's a significant difference between EMC and Continental Western. Here's another major difference, property insurance, the best Continental Western would offer is a $5,000 deductible. We asked for a $1,000 deductible and that's what EMC is proposing is a $1,000 deductible and the best that Continental Western would do would be 5,000, that's just on property. Sure, I'm here to answer any questions if I can. I'm not an insurance guy. Lynn and I read through it today, best we could, and the property insurance was the big difference and I tried to break everything out there best I could. Cody, I took the, what you had linebacker and data compromise, I just stuck that together and put it with liability on my form. I don't know if that's the right way for it, but I didn't have, those were separate categories than what we used before, so I stuck it in there as, as an amount, so. What is a linebacker? I know what it is in football, I'm not sure what I, what it is in insurance.
That's their cute company name for directors and officers, insurance and professional liability for the board.
For the board?
Yes.
And I know what the data compromise is, we talked about that already, so.
Yes.
So that's probably the right place to put it, under liability, correct?
Yes.
Now, our current insurance ends the end of August, so we have it here tonight to make a motion. I'm guessing if you didn't feel comfortable yet choosing, we could probably still do it in August, but. It said that we would, we would do it at the July meeting.
It's not gonna be a good year. It's two.
We try to do it on a three-year basis, yeah. That's what we've been doing, it's been on a three-year basis.
So is this for three years or it could go on just like?
This is just for one year at this point in time, but what we've been doing is just staying with the same company for three years and then going through the bid process again.
With this Indiana, they just aren't gonna do it.
They're not gonna do it for Nebraska and Iowa schools. That's, that's what they told me, so. And they really told us late, I think, I think I found out, so maybe April and.
Well, they have to do it 60 days before renewal and then wait until the last minute to do it. When they knew they were gonna do that, basically, so.
They do it. Four years ago, we had EMC, Patrick and Laurie Rass with some agents. We paid in about 75,000 a year, what we paid. Indiana came in and just kinda underbid a lot of schools in Nebraska and Iowa and a lot of people jumped to them and I'm not, I don't know what happened, but I'm guessing they had some catastrophic claims on tornadoes maybe, or maybe flood from the Missouri River and they just didn't have enough property coverage to take care of it all, I'm guessing. I don't know, but.
So was this 55, was this three years ago or is this what we paid?
This was, this past year was the pay, this past year. Significant difference. But again, EMC, that's about the same price with EMC that we paid four years ago with Patrick and Laurie and EMC was.
They undercut it and they kept it.
We didn't, we didn't have hardly any claims with Stu the last four years. Couple vandalism claims maybe and maybe we had a bumper, a fender bender with a bus and that's been about it. We didn't, we didn't file really anything. And he even, even admitted that you didn't pay him at any point, so.
So this company too, if the claims are low or nonexistent, they rotate them?
On the workman's comp.
Oh, just the workman's?
On the workman's comp.
Now, what did we get through Stu, exactly? This workman's comp, he gives that four times.
Yeah, we used to get a dividend back to him too.
That's just for?
Yeah, if you don't have any major.
Is that the 4,000 that was in the paper a couple months ago? You accepted the check?
He just says this insurance dividend.
And so where does that money go when it comes back?
Probably under other receipts somewhere.
The biggest question I have is more in process and that is you and Lynn together opened the bids and nobody else has seen them since, just this opening?
Under automobile, was that all the vehicles?
That's everything.
So all the buses?
Schools, schools have a pretty good safety history, but.
Gee, that's pretty good.
They're not, they're not high risk, I would say, Cody, right?
That's a lot of it. They're treated a little bit differently than if Cody has a Corvette, because of the way they're driven and, like you said, good lost experience.
And this is called a commercial automobile policy too. It's not just a straight, like we can get privately.
Right.
But it was, it was cheap for, it was Stu too, it was 3,500.
All the buses and the vehicles. What did the automobile say?
500.
500? Any idea why the big, to me, the big discrepancy would be a possibility? Yeah. And you said the first one was 5,000.
The one from Continental Western is 5,000.
EMC is about. I mean, it should be.
I know, but I, I got it right. 5,000 deductible on building and contents, no other option exists and is, no other option yet.
And they have the same rates of property.
Exactly.
I will comment that in working with Continental Western on some other business, they did take about a 20 to 25% line item increase on property coverages and pushed higher deductibles because they had a lot of wind and hail claims last year. And so their, their pricing has moved up there pretty significantly on the property side.
And these were the only two for?
Only two. The only other company I'm aware of is Columbia. Yeah, Columbia Insurance when I was at Harvard, you know, they gave us a Columbia bid. There might be other insurance companies that do schools, but these are the four companies. Indiana is still gonna do school insurance, just not gonna do it in Nebraska and Iowa, I guess, so.
So we're ready for the action?
Boards are ready.
You have any other questions, Dr.?
I think, I think, you know, if you make a motion for EMC, you may wanna designate how you wanna do the workers', workers' compensation, if you wanna go with a smaller price, which is the SFM.
Correct.
Do you wanna explain that a little bit, Cody, the difference between the workman's comp between the two groups?
Okay. The companies typically look at workman's comp as one of the things that they'll let you get from another insurance carrier. By doing that, I, the disadvantage I see to it is that when they underwrite your account, they look at the total dollars in claims they've paid out to the total premium they've collected. So if you have bad loss experience with work comp, but really good property experience and you're doing business with SFM and EMC, they can't really combine those two things to look at them. If you have it all with EMC and you maybe have a year where you have bad work comp experience, they're gonna look at the account as a whole versus just the piece that they write. Another thing to note, SFM is not rated by AM Best. The reason they choose not to be is that that's a service that the insurance company has to pay for. However, they do engage insurance auditing firms in preparing their financials, reviewing their losses, make sure they're a good, stable business and they're very open and willing to share their financial statement with people.
And there's like a 4,000.
About 5,000, I think.
5,000.
Yeah. And the dividend, in looking at that with the size of the work comp policy that you guys have, the most you could get back would be 9% of the EMC work comp premium. In a year. Right, in a year. In, in a year.
That would even be 3,000.
Right. You'd be about 20, I think I figured 24, 2600. 26,000.
A little under that.
Yeah. Oh, I'm, I can, I'll do that. And I can, you know, I'm comfortable with either company's ability to pay claims in the event of a loss. I think they'll be there.
That's a question I have for you. If we go for the subcarrier?
Mm-hmm.
And you made the comment that if we turn in a lot of workman's comp, say in the next two years, we're talking about a 40-year deal, they could raise that one separate from the other one and that could go to sort of 22,000 to 48,000 if we turned in a lot of claims in a year.
Sure, yep, it could and, but.
I guess that's the way I understood what you're explaining is it could really fluctuate, where the other one might not fluctuate as much. They won't weigh in how big you get on the other side.
Yep.
So I guess the question is.
And it can go.
Workman's comp claims do we, you know, track right through the last?
We've had a few, they've been pretty minor. And then they haven't been real costly. Like I said, with Indiana, we hardly ever filed anything.
It can work the other way too, if you have a hailstorm come through and let's say that totals the roof on every building that we have insured, but you don't have any work comp claims and your work comp is with EMC, you know, then they count those premium dollars as part of offsetting that, so it's.
It's almost like a set.
I'm okay with the way it's, it's fine.
I don't like it, it's.
Yeah, it's brilliant. I'm not sure you have any for it. Yeah, but come across, they'll let you. Okay, that's, that's.
Your work comp history has been very good. You're at a 0.82 mod and what that does is it compares you with risks like yours. 1.00 is considered average, above 1 is worse than average, below 1's better, so what they're telling you is you're 18% better than average or better than what they would expect. And that also generates an 18% credit right off the bat when they figure the premium.
So that's 80% for work comp?
That would be for any work comp carrier, whether it be Continental Western, EMC. Correct.
I guess I have a proposal to go with EMC, what about the 70, 30, 20, 80?
With SFM doing the work.
SFM doing the workman's comp. Do we have a second?
Do we have a second? It'll be moved by Randy and seconded by Sean. We go with the EMC proposal with the separate company for the workman's comp. Discussion.
Blatchman. Lawlerin.
Yes.
Oshman.
Yes.
Donovan.
Yes.
Lightwing.
Steve.
None, yes? Dummer.
Yes.
And we move into the discussion items. First item is the superintendent evaluation document.
I, I just sent it in your packet, I believe. And, um, I had had Dave and Dennis looking over, I think, last month or the month before that and they gave me some suggestions. So, I think the part I like probably the best is the timeline. I think it really, you know, spells things out, what we do at the October meeting, what we do at the November meeting and, and so on and so forth, and how the evaluation's placed in my file whatsoever. I think it's just good and, good and clear and that'd be something every October that we'll, you know, we'll go through. As far as the evaluation, and this was, I think, uh, Mr. Klein and I kinda worked on this together. We had, cause he wanted one for his new job at Logan View and we've got different samples in and, you know, you can go through, there's a lot of things that are very similar to what we had, but when you get to standard aid, standard aid is, is, is an open-handed one that the board can, can agree to what indicators they wanna see in the next evaluation as far as improvement of, of performance. And so it's, it's spelled out there and I think it would be, it would be great. That's, that's something that I saw it on my last evaluation and didn't really get a clear picture of. And I, and I think this would be, you know, a way to do that every year is that, you know, you're gonna fill out standard aid and that's gonna show, you know, something for me to work on for the, for the upcoming year. So, I wanted the board to look at it. Certainly it'll be, be up to you if it fits the document that you wanna use, but I really like it. I think it's got a lot more clarity and, and I really like the, the timeline.
I guess I gotta agree with you, Mark, too. We kinda have an issue with this and you're going, not getting to the tweet, all of us. So, um, a question I have for you, so if you have satisfactory, unsatisfactory, and then you have comments down there, how would you like to see a quick comment? If it's unsatisfactory, would you like to have a, you know, a comment that, you know, most blah, 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 whatever? Would you like to be specific for that? If it's satisfactory, do you want us to, you know, not make a comment or say you're doing a great job or, you know? Like I said, I went to that one, the Lincoln one, and I liked that idea was, you know, if you put here or here, you gotta make a comment. If you put in the middle, you didn't have to, I guess. That would maybe help us as a board when we sit down at the end of, you know, to find out where we're at, you know, one spectrum or the other, do we have similar comments on certain things? And, and it's helpful, you need to be able to do this too, I mean, to, to go forward.
I, I think the, the, you know, the way, the way the timeline reads, I'm not gonna see all the individual evaluations. You're gonna get, get together eventually and put them together and come out with one. So, you know, to me, the type, the type of comments that are gonna help me are gonna be the ones that the majority of the board can agree upon, any one of these indicators and that. And, uh, to me, that's, that's what that, that is for. Certainly, I think the comments are helpful, but they're most helpful when, when a consensus of the board agrees that, yeah, you know, this is what he does good and this is what he needs to work on. I think that's, that's the part we didn't really.
Yeah, because last year we had nine different comments and you didn't know where to, which way to go. It makes it hard for you.
But I, but I'm gonna get, I'm only gonna get one evaluation.
Right, right.
And that will help then, if you come to a consensus.
My thought would be, if you put unsatisfactory, you better put a comment. And maybe you wouldn't have to if it's satisfactory, but if you think it's extremely satisfactory.
I guess, I guess.
Then you could put it. I mean, there's a lot of, like, I don't know what our evaluation is.
For us, a lot of them, I mean, how discussions? What's that? I said for us as a board and half, I didn't get it wrong, but as us as a board when we sat down and we get that with the discussions. You know, like you said, we're all gonna get one now instead of nine.
Well, I think, I think Jim makes a good point. I mean, if you, if you check unsatisfactory, you oughta have a reason and you oughta be able to write that out in a comment form. Another thing that I think you need to consider is what, what is the term of this evaluation? What are you looking at? Are you looking at the past year? You know, we evaluate our teachers and principals each year to year. We don't go back to, this happened three years ago. We do it within, within that year. But for most of the time, it doesn't really define that with a superintendent's evaluation either, so.
Well, since it's an annual evaluation, it could make sense that it's just for the past.
I think it would be helpful at the meeting that we have as a board prior to when, I mean, with Mr. Noel Bell, if, uh, if you check unsatisfactory, if you list the reason and we can discuss that and come to a consensus that the board isn't really unsatisfactory. And if it is, then we would pass that along to Mr. Noel Bell. If it's a consensus of the board that it's not unsatisfactory, then I don't see any reason to.
Okay, I have a problem with consensus because consensus means we all a hundred percent agree. I don't think we're all going to agree on everything. I'm sorry, that's just not realistic.
To me, consensus is if we have eight members of the board and five would say, no, it's not unsatisfactory.
That's majority, not consensus.
Well, then it should be majority.
Okay, just so that we understand that it's not that we all agree.
Then it should be majority. Because we only have power as a board, not as a.
Right.
Yeah, I guess I was looking at consensus, Sherry, as just meaning the majority, but I should say about well.
That's good, Sherry, I have. It's really majority. Any other comments on the evaluation?
Well, if it's okay, then it would be an action item, I suppose, for us to adopt.
Transportation report?
And I gave you a copy and, and if you remember right, when we were voting on buses a year, gosh, how long has it been ago? But anyway, I had given you kind of a projected budget. I think it came out, you know, pretty close to the budget. I think the second, last page of the transportation report gives you the total district transportation costs, sort of. It's the actual cost of routes, activities, wages, bike retirement, fuel, insurance, utility and other. So certainly, you know, I'm not including the cost of what we spent to buy all those buses. You know, we did that out of the previous budget. And I don't know how to figure depreciation costs. I mean, there is some depreciation to all those vehicles and I don't know how to estimate that. So these are just the costs that I, that we accumulated as far as fuel. I didn't budget enough for fuel. I went by the price at the time and I think we, we budgeted about fifty-five thousand for fuel and we spent sixty-nine, but we were under enough other areas that it didn't make that big of a factor. So I know next year we need to budget, you know, a little bit more. But, uh, Bob Taylor did, I think, a great job of managing everything and, and, and all the buses. We had very few repairs, a few minor repairs. Uh, those two brand-new Thomas buses, you know, the one's got twenty-four thousand miles and the other one twenty-one already. Doesn't take long, so, uh, but. I got, Woody's gonna start giving this sheet out as a monthly report rather than that one that has so much stuff on it. I, I just never could read through that thing and I think this one's a little bit more clear. So our monthly report's gonna look a little bit different, but we kinda have it. Broke out into large buses and sped vehicles and activity vehicles. Of course, like the gray van is listed as a sped vehicle because during the day we use it for our success program, but then after three-thirty, it's also an activity vehicle. So, we don't list it both places, but. And then the maintenance vehicles, we just have one at, at every building, basically. They're not worth a lot to try to sell them and there are times when we try to use them. We don't put a lot of miles on them, especially the van at the local school. We put a hundred and seventeen miles on it in a year. It's probably something that, we probably could take those four vehicles and just do liability insurance on them too. Maybe we have already, I'm not sure, but you can see our insurance costs for, for vehicles aren't very, isn't very much anymore, so.
I had someone asking the other day, none of these vehicles go home with employees, do they?
Somebody might take a suburban home, like let's say, you know, Denise Cavanda's driving to Omaha for an FCC LA thing or the next day or something and, and she lives in Billigan, she might take it home the night before to leave from there. That would be the only, the only time, something like that would happen. Better than that, don't, don't take them.
Looks like they all have full coverage according to the schedule.
But again, the, the cost is really.
No more cost per vehicle.
Guess we could save a little bit if we wanted to take them home.
I don't think it'd be natural.
It's nice when you have to replace things, windshield or, or lights or whatever, so. So, that's the transportation report. Okay, any questions, you know? Certainly gonna use this document as a budget this year. Pretty handy. Lynn did a great job of helping me get that ready. Go on, uh, Sherry.
Oh, I thought you were going, huh?
I can.
Go for it.
Um, I got something, I think I put it out in front of the day. It's got a little A on the top and a B on the second page. I never know what, what budget items you wanna see and what you don't wanna see. So I'm gonna talk about the receipt side of our budget right now and that's that from page A. So if you take a look at the first column, this was our two thousand eleven, twelve budget of receipts. This is where I projected, and all of them except for local property taxes are projection. This is what I projected as income. Uh, local property tax, the five million, two thirty-six is of course what we requested when we set the levy, okay? And if you go to the bottom of that column, notice that the receipt totals are seven million, two hundred and fifty thousand. That's the amount of money I thought we would bring in. But our budget was seven million, five seventy. Well, probably every year except for this past year, I always budget the same amount of receipts as I do our total budget. But I, we, a year ago, we decided we have one point eight million dollars in cash. There's no sense accumulating anymore. Because if you bring in, if we brought in seven point five million in receipts and then only spent seven point two, then we're gonna add three hundred thousand back to our cash and we'll be at two point one million. So, when I, when I reseeded and asked for property taxes, I just did it by what I thought we would spend. And we always spend about three hundred thousand under budget. So, you know, I asked for receipts for seven, two fifty, but I budgeted for seven, five seventy cause if we did go over, over the receipts, we had plenty of cash to cover that. First year we've ever done it that way, but we, we'd accumulated cash for six years in a row and there was really no reason to do that, to do that anymore. Keep in mind, we added another five hundred thousand to, to not spend. We put our cash reserve, some of it in our budget because that's what the Department of Ed recommended, so we didn't have a fiscal problem two or three years down the road. That middle column then is what we've received through June thirtieth. And don't, don't confuse the first and the third lines, local property tax. It looks like we've collected more than we asked for. Well, some of that is the third line down, public power district sales tax, but Lynn hasn't broken it out yet because it's kinda difficult to decipher and the auditor and her do that in September. They'll break it out in September of what was actually public, public power district sales tax and what was local property tax. She just doesn't take the time to, to break it out yet. So we haven't collected more. But, um, you know, that shows where we're at and I'd say we're about on track. If you go down into state sources, wards of the court, that's the money we get back from operating the boys home. We're certainly way behind on that, but we always are. We should get another big check, probably August and then in October or November, we'll get the check that finishes out this fiscal year. They're always like three months behind. So, it, it's, it makes it a difficult situation, but I, they're usually pretty good. And Jackie Bernikoff helps us on the other end with that money. And if I tell her, hey, we're way short of money, she finds a way to, to get it to us. So, um, I think we'll finish about on track. We've, we spent last year, a year ago, we spent just under seven point three million in our budget. This year, we're gonna spend about seven point two. And, and so we're gonna spend about a hundred thousand dollars less this year than we did a year ago. That's my estimate at this time. But the reason for that is remember that we had stimulus money that they gave us the past two years that we had to spend. And we don't have that stimulus money this year. That went away, so that's probably why our expenditure was. In the last column, this is not set in stone yet, but this is what I'm thinking about at least for a projected budget. The biggest change, of course, is state aid. We lose about forty thousand in state aid. I got that highlighted in yellow. Everything else, I pretty much projected about the same, maybe a little bit higher for the boys home. Uh, and that's about what we're gonna need then in property taxes, somewhere around the five point five million. That would give us, that would put us at a receipts, that'd be receipts of seven point five million. I would probably budget around seven point eight. But again, we would normally only spend what we have receipts for. So we normally have about a three hundred thousand dollar cushion. And of course, you can always spend that cushion if you find a reason to spend it, but then you'll be using some of your cash, so just so you keep that in mind. And then our other cash reserve, we would do that again. I talked to Janice at the Department of Ed and she suggested we continue to do that. It would give us a budget of about eight point three. And again, this isn't finalized, this is just my projection, you know, at this time. I haven't gone through the dispersment side a great deal because again, we still have two months, July and August. After claims tonight, we'll have pretty much July figured out and after payroll on the twentieth. And so it'll just come down then to August dispersments.
And do your federal sources, your WAB find and your title and IDA, that all comes in towards the end of the year?
Well, it's things that I have to file for, like Title One. We pay Title One, we have a Title One teacher, a Title One aide, Title One classroom. I have to file for that reimbursement. I usually wait till about the first of August and file for it. IDA, I filed for all of that and they just approved part of it last week. So I know we have about eighty thousand coming in under IDA. And hopefully they'll approve the rest before August thirtieth. If they don't, it'll just add on to, to next year's receipts.
But you're confident that those are the numbers? I mean, what was projected, your budget?
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, absolutely. Title One, Title Two, it looks like it's an I, I there, but Title Two and IDA, those numbers, we'll, we'll get all that money. It's just a matter of me filing for it. It's more a matter of timing. Medicaid, Medicaid administrative, some years, Sherry, we'll get forty thousand and some years we'll get five. So I just kinda average out between.
So at this point, those numbers are pretty much on track?
Yeah. You just never know what you're gonna get with those, you really don't. Other receipts, REIT money was thirty-three thousand. That's what we used for part of our computer laptop initiative, that's the other receipts. Non-revenue, I had Lynn try to explain to me non-revenue sources today. I didn't spell a lot of stuff, didn't miss. You make money on the property, but you gave up an asset. So it's considered to be non-revenue. I'm not sure on the other, seems like a lot of the other there, but she could probably tell you. But it's not something you really count on to be a moneymaker because normally it's a trade even off the dispersment side.
What is that wards of the court exactly?
That's, basically, it's for those students that are placed, sometimes we get students placed in our school that are wards of the court also. You get money that follows those, but for, for the most part, the majority of that money comes from the boys' home. Comes from Medicaid, follow the boys' home.
Is there some reason the state can't deal directly with the state?
It's a long story, it is.
It looks like we're taking.
I, I meet with them about every other year on it. I met with them, Lynn will tell you, I met with them the end of June again. Anytime they get new people left at the Department of Ed, the first thing they do is they notice this because we're the only school district in the state doing it this way.
We are?
We are the only one. And so they call, we have a meeting and every year, we have an hour meeting and they just throw their hands up and say, let's just continue on because it's just not the best.
You mean, in other places, they take money directly to the other?
The other, the other schools are considered Rule 18 schools, maybe like Geneva North is here. They operate their own school. Everything is funded right through them. This school, if we don't do it this way, then we bring those 15 to 20 boys in here and they go to school here. So that's the choice they're giving us. Do it that way or we bring them all in here.
They won't be saying that to school out there?
They won't. We've asked them to. The owner, the owner lives in the pavilion, he doesn't want to. I think it's a cash withdrawal for him personally.
I don't know.
Somehow, don't, I don't, I mean, I don't know that. Don't quote me on that, but I'm just saying, there's some benefit that he has to do it this way. There has to be. And I probably, this is starting my eighth year, I probably, I probably met with them four times on this, the owner and the Department of Ed and it's always, this is what they end up saying. It's your choice. They're out there, you pay, you're reimbursed from wards of the court or you bring them in here. And I just don't think our parents and community would, would go for that. We're not really out anything. They're, they reimburse us. It's, they're behind always, but they do reimburse us. So anyway, then on the second page B, I just, I put our three main non-general fund items. Our special building fund, the beginning, that means back to September 1st where it was. Our receipts, our dispersments, we just had our first one, I think, for the year. And then what our ending balance is. Keep in mind that they're working on our roof of the elementary now and there'll be some money there. And remember, we had the paving assessment. We've never been billed for that, so I'm not sure how they're doing the paving assessment, but we gotta pay that out of there. We're doing lights and carpet here and at the middle school this, this summer and we'll get bills for that yet probably. Sometimes if, if I have enough money left in general fund, I just pay it out of those building budgets too and I don't, I don't pay it out of building fund just because I, I think we want to accumulate that. Depreciation, that's what we use for vehicles and we spent a lot of that a year ago. And so the only receipts we've had right now is interest, but, you know, I'm gonna suggest to you in August that if we, if we have to spend 7.2 million out of our budget, we have a 7.5 million dollar budget that we put maybe 100,000 in depreciation fund or 50,000 or whatever you're comfortable with and start building that back up. We are gonna need, we're always gonna need vehicles, we're gonna need to replace buses and whatever. When you finish under budget, that's a good way, good way to do that. The Q cap fund, the beginning receipt, the beginning, the receipts, the dispersment, that's a fund we levy for, it was 2.2 cents this past year. The last payment is December of 2015. So the last levy would be the fall of 2014. Because really, the levy we set is for the, really, the next year. Because we don't get those receipts until May and September, or at least the majority of them. And so we just need to get those receipts before the December payment. So we won't have to levy for that in, in 2015 anymore. We should have enough in, in the fund to make that last payment. I think it's 135,000, so. And one of our goals a couple of years ago, we talked about, is that we didn't, we didn't want to have to use a Q cap fund anymore if we didn't have to. So it was to build, the building fund up big enough to cover the roof and, and major things like when we redid the track for 90,000, the roof was anywhere between 170 and 250,000. So that was the goal of, of keeping our building fund kind of plus was that we wouldn't have to do the Q cap. Still do a Q cap, the interest rates are low or whatever, but certainly with a building fund, there is no interest if you, if you accumulate enough money. Sometimes, you know, people see that, oh, they got half a million dollars in the building fund, what are they using that for? Well, you know, it can go fast. One roof, we cut it in half, so.
One water, 10,000, whatever.
So I think, I think financially, you know, we're setting, we're setting very good. We're a non-state aid school anymore and that used to be our largest, next to property taxes, our largest receipt was state aid. Now it's special education and wards of the court, other than our local property taxes. But we won't find evaluations out until August 20. And I know there's some projections out, but ours always varies a little bit from Schickley's and Exeter Milligan's because of the ethanol plant and appreciation of the ethanol plants. Ours is not the same countywide as theirs, so I always have to wait till the 20th. I don't, I don't, I won't even give you an estimate and I'll have no idea until it cuts out, so. I will send you, again, whatever stuff you want. Lynn and I'll be working on the dispersment side in the next few weeks and we'll estimate that for you. And I'll have an estimate about where we're gonna end the year. I'll certainly, as soon as evaluations come out, I'll give you my thoughts on, on levy estimate and whatever and special building fund, whatever we want to do. Certainly the Q cap fund will fall a little bit this year. It's 2.2 this year. It might be under 2 cents, I'm guessing. Special building fund, we've kept it 4 cents for about three years in a row. I don't really have an idea. Questions?
Questions? Then we'll move on to board policy review, 4154 and 412.
These were the only two, we did the 4,000s, we did them over three months. It took three months to get through the 4,000s. And these were the only two that had check marks by them. And so I don't know if any of you checked these in particular and had anything on 4130, which is our teacher evaluation, policy and procedure. And then the second one was 4154 is our early retirement incentive program. And maybe we forgot one we checked, but, you know, I mean, it could be.
And how often do you evaluate teachers?
Uh, non-tenured teachers are twice a year. And I think tenured teachers are evaluated once every three years, although I require the principals to be, be walking through the classroom or sitting down in the classroom every semester in every room. So, you know, it's not a formal evaluation, but, and if they have a tenured teacher that is on an improvement plan, then they're, they're doing evaluation every year.
I think I actually checked this for that, for the three, I think, thinking three years is a long time.
Yeah.
I think maybe that's why.
Yeah.
And so.
But I think.
It's one of those, if it's one of those three, let's say somebody's been here for six years and they know one of those improvement plans and then they're gonna get check marks.
Every semester, at, at the minimum, every semester.
And then they give a review then or it's just update or?
They'll get the full evaluation then.
Each semester.
Each semester. Then, that's the minimum. They'll, they'll also be, I mean, if they're really on the improvement plan, then probably every two or three weeks, we're doing a visit to the room or something. I, I think, I think the nice thing about it, Jim, is, is, you know, I won't, I won't use names, but if you have a social studies teacher that's been there 30 years and is fantastic, you know, why are you gonna, why are you gonna waste time every year being in that room for 15 minutes doing a full evaluation when you could be in a lot of places that, that you're, that you're needed? So it gives a little bit of discretion to the principals, but they're, they're in the rooms all the time. They're supposed to be, and they're, you know, they need to do walkthroughs and sometimes it's five minutes, sometimes it's 10 minutes, but the full evaluation is a period long. For our non-tenured teachers, it's, it's, it's two times a year. For our tenured teachers, it's once a year. And I think it talks about it, tenured teacher, if they're on an improvement plan, maybe somewhere in here, that might be a different one. And the teacher evaluation instrument actually has to be adopted by the board, but it also has to be on file with the Department of Education and with your school attorney's office. So it's, it's, it's a variety of things there, so.
All to do with that.
Well, the, the Department of Ed is actually coming out with a new, and they're, they're working with some teachers. It's been about a three-year process. They're gonna come out with a new evaluation system for both teachers and principals. So it really, it really wouldn't do us a whole lot of good to make a lot of changes to anything right now because it's gonna, it's gonna all come out anyway.
So on evaluation criteria, instructional performance, that means how they do in the room or how their, how kids' grade averages over a specific period of time?
Wouldn't have to do with grade average, but it might have to do with achievement test scores and how that checks area.
So that would be.
Standardized test scores. Somebody can hand out awfully good grades and be a terrible teacher.
Sure. So, so it's more based on achievement.
Grades is not really good indicator.
Right.
You know, instructional performance.
Any further discussion?
How about other retirements? Any programs anyone remember?
Wasn't that the wonder? Where he's opening and somebody might start for you.
We can change it every year.
Yeah, I know, but I thought that that was why it was.
The maximum it could be in the policy says is six. In the policy, the early retirement policy, it's, six is the maximum you can accept, but then this part, it's, you know, if you don't, if you don't do anything, it's a zero. So it's kind of like, it's kind of a early retirement policy that's it. You don't really have to have one if you, if you say it's gonna be zero. Either vote to have zero or make no action, then, then you don't have one that year.
Say, well, sorry.
Yeah. So rather, rather than abolish the policy one year and then a new board comes on and they want it, it's just allow the board now can set up where they want it. Don't want any, then we set it up. So I, I like it personally. It gives you a lot of, lot of power to do that each year too. Well, we'll start then on the 5,000s next month, okay?
Okay. Next night in the facilities. I talked, and I apologize, I kind of jerked it well. Thanks for leaving, I'll share. I talked to Kyle and we said if we will look at our calendars and maybe give him three or four possibilities in the next couple of weeks. He suggested 5 o'clock. So I will email you tomorrow. You can send them back to me or, and then we'll, I'll contact Kyle. Do you want to be in the role?
Okay. If Kyle's gonna be there, I'll be there.
Well, I think Rod's gonna, it's basically for, Rod is always at those two.
Kyle's a little under the weather.
Oh, is he?
As far as the science rooms, I'm gonna have Mitch is here tonight, but Mitch and Dave Segerman and Mr. Rose and our architect are gonna get together and kind of come out with a plan or an equipment list or how they'd like to see it and maybe an approximate, approximate cost. And then we'll present that to the board and the board can, you know, decide the direction they want to go on that also. But we'll do that once we get back in the school about the middle of August. So I don't know if we'll have a by the August board meeting or we'll certainly have a by the September board meeting.
Thank you.
The next meeting is set for Monday, August 20.
Do that August meeting a week later just so we can kind of finish the fiscal year and pay as many, many things as we can, get paid off to start the new fiscal year, so.
Need a motion to adjourn. Move.
Yes, Asher?
Yes.
Tony?
Yep.
Mike?
Yes.
Lily?
Yes.
Good night.
Yes.